We have with us Mr. Brad Harris from the St. Charles Bible Baptist Church. He would lead us in prayer, and after that we will have Mike Klingham to lead us in the pledge. We all rise.
Let's pray, may we? Well, we're thankful and grateful that we do live in a country where we celebrate our freedom and we enjoy it, and I pray that we do become servants to better each and every county, but especially the one we represent. But I thank you for those who are involved in each and every one of these meetings and have a concern for the betterment of our community that we get to enjoy. I pray you bless this meeting this evening, and again, remind us to just be grateful for who we are and what we have here in this St. Charles County. Bless each and everyone that represents each part of this county in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have roll call, please.
Councilman Cronin.
Here.
Councilman Brazel.
Here.
Councilman Elam.
Here.
Councilman White.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Klingham.
Here.
Thank you. Now, we'll go into public presentations. We have a gentleman here, Todd Barnes, who gave a presentation.
Good evening, everyone, leaders of St. Charles County. Appreciate the opportunity to update the group on our neighbors experiencing homelessness. I am the executive director of Community Council, an organization that's been together since 1954, that works to bring people, organizations, and resources together to create a stronger, healthier, more compassionate community. One of the three community outreaches that we do at Community Council involves being the lead agency for Continuum of Care. Continuum of Care is a geographic area set forth by HUD that's sole purpose is to end homelessness. There are six Continuums of Care that make up the greater St. Charles area, and our continuum is St. Charles, Lincoln, and Warren Counties. So, the initial data that we have for you this evening are the tri-county area, but we will drill down on this data dashboard into the individual for St. Charles County. In 2017, HUD sent forth an unfunded mandate to create an easy way for our neighbors experiencing homelessness to access services. Prior to coordinated entry, which was this mandate, those that were homeless would have to call multiple agencies to find resources, and our agencies were tremendous workers. They did a great job, but there was no coordination on how those resources were to be put together and used. Coordinated entry came together to create that possibility that all those resources would be put together for the simple means of ending homelessness for our neighbors. Coordinated entry is a one phone call, one system, where our neighbor experiencing homelessness dials 211. We have a partnership with United Way. Through two simple steps, they enter their ZIP code, and then they're connected directly to our case management team, which was a best practice from across the country when we were putting coordinated entry together in 2017, then launched in January 23rd of 2018. We have five case managers that take the assessments when our neighbors call, and we then connect them with the best possible resource that would help them end that homeless situation. And I'll walk you through several different slides that will talk about what that looks like. Agencies are seeing a decrease in the number of phone calls coming in because we've taken those phone calls now, and now we're connecting them to the agency that has the best case to make sure that that resource is best spent for our neighbors that are homeless. So, let me walk you through a few slides, and then certainly be willing to go through any questions that you all may have. As I mentioned, as the continuum, we're a tri-county area. Since January 23rd through April 19th, our coordinated entry team has talked to 4,129 of our neighbors who are homeless, and that's for the tri-county area. This data dashboard that our data scientist Diana Lazar has put together can now drill down to ZIP codes, to cities, to counties, so we have a really good picture. As I go up and down Interstate 70, I kind of joke and speak to the leaders of our counties in St. Charles, Lincoln, and Warren. We're able to really drill down as to who the homeless are in our cities. Each one of these boxes represents one of our neighbors. The very first one is a household of 13 that has zero income. We walk right down through the rest of them. We have a household of five with an average income of $31,000. They write just a little bit about poverty level, which is $25,750 for a family of four. And we go right down all the way to from individual or households of three or more, four or more, down all the way here to individuals. And each one of these boxes is a neighbor that we've spoken to, and it also speaks about the income that they have. The next slide will show us across the tri-county area, how many assessments we have done. These are not the street homeless that are right now, but these are the folks that we've talked to in the last 14 months and done assessments by cities. And you can see it's pretty widespread across the tri-county area. And we talked to 10 of our neighbors in Hawk Point, 320 in Troy, 69 in Winfield, 209 in Warrenton, 460 in Wentzville, 376 in St. Peters, and 1,273 assessments were done for our neighbors in the city of St. Charles. When we drill down to St. Charles County, these are the families that are living below or on the poverty line. So, again, $25,750 is the poverty line. This very first bar, there's of the 2,800 assessments that we did just in St. Charles County since January 23rd of 2018, 537 have an average income of $348. We work over to this bar, there's 119 of our neighbors that have an average income of $7,885. So, we're able to capture not only what their disposition is for homelessness, but also any income streams that they may have coming in too. When we look at the makeup and who is our neighbors that are experiencing homelessness, 1,249 of the 2,800 assessments we did just in St. Charles County are single-parent females. So, 45% of our homeless in St. Charles County are moms with kids. And you can walk down the rest. We have 137 that we've assessed that are males. We have 442 family with two parents. We have a family of adults, and then individual adults, we have 599. But I think it's pretty pressing to see that 45% of our homeless are moms trying to create a household for their kids. That kind of goes back to that first slide that we showed too. When we walked through, you could see many of those first boxes were multiple folks in the family, and almost half of them were females that are trying to make ends meet. This is the demographic of who's homeless in St. Charles County. 1,864 are white. It's about 67% of the total amount that we've assessed, and that's totally different than necessarily the demographic of what we see as St. Charles County as a whole. We had 660 of our neighbors who were assessed were black or Afro-American, multiracial, and we had a category for Hispanic, too, 109 Hispanic that were white, and it works right down. So, we have a pretty good picture of who are our neighbors that are homeless based upon race also. If you look at the age ranges too, not only is it a little interesting to see that 45% of our homeless are single-parent females, almost 39% are below the age of 20. And that, again, relates back to the mom who's trying to take care of multiple kids that has no permanent place to call a home. 554 of the 2,800 we'd assessed are from 0 to 9, and then 536 are between the ages of 10 and 19. When we do the assessments, so our neighbors that call us, that can dial 211, enter their ZIP code, they go to 3, that's connected with our team, we start trying to find what is that housing crisis. 41% of the calls of 2,800 that we assessed here in St. Charles County were literally homeless. They're in a place that's not fit for human habitation, and that could also include couch surfing, living with a friend. They're not in a permanent location. So, 41% are in that situation. We also talked with about 25% of our assessments are in a imminent risk. So, they've received a notification that within two weeks, they're going to be homeless. It could be an eviction, it could be utility shut off, it could be grandma saying, "We just doesn't work anymore, we need to move on." So, we find these different levels of assessment, and that helps us determine the resources, of course, that we'd be connected with. And then about a third, 31%, are in a housing crisis. They may think they're going to be evicted, they may have a passed due utility bill. So, we're able to take that third and connect them with the organizations that could make those bills payments for us, or move on to other places. We also create a short-term and long-term plan for everyone that we talk to, and that kind of puts folks at ease that says, "All right, if we do step A, B, and C, then we're going to come back and work on E, D, F, and further down the road." But we build a short-term and long-term plan for every one of the folks that we visit with. The services that were, oops, well, we're missing the information on that side. 447 of the referrals that we did, the connections, were for quite case management. We try and connect each one of our neighbors who are homeless with a case management. Could be a church group, could be an actual agency that does the case management, but that walk-along is so necessary when it comes to doing multiple things to work towards getting back into a safe and sustainable housing. As we walk through all of the different assessments that we've done, again, 2,800 that we've assessed, 1,900 we were able to successfully divert away from some form of homelessness. That could have been a connection with a church to pay utility bill, it could be a connection with an individual, could be just a quick conversation about what you're doing is fine, but it doesn't move them into a homeless state or into a prioritization listing that would go to how we would get them housed. So, after that, 1,904 were diverted away from homelessness. We had 1,000 in these last 14 months that ended up on our prioritization list, and those are based upon a vulnerability assessment that we do, with 20 being the most vulnerable all the way down, and I'll show you example of that in a second. And then we start working on the most vulnerable first. We do case conferencing once a month with multiple agencies that come together face-to-face and say, "How can we work to house these of our neighbors that are homeless?" As of April 19th, there were 321 that were on our prioritization list for housing, for homeless, and in that 14-month time period, 382 of our neighbors were housed, and that was through a tremendous work with all of our agencies in the county. There's 120 different agencies that have come together to support coordinated entry, and that's a pretty big statement when it comes to how we're going to work on creating opportunities for our neighbors that are homeless. One interesting slide of the 382 that were housed, 190 of our neighbors are living on their own. They're not having any subsidies or supports from any of the agencies. The 109 and the 55, those are ones that we try and catch back up with periodically, a little more often, because they're permanently housed, but whether a family member or a friend, and those could deteriorate. So, we do constant checkups on this group to make sure that they're still, friends and family are still allowing them to be with them, but we do consider them to be permanently housed. Now, of the 382, only 29 of those are actually having supports from different agencies. So, I was pretty proud that there are a lot of our homeless neighbors that are out there that are making it with or without another agency supporting that. And then the last slide is just an example of, we've lost that. I'm not sure where all that went to. Sorry, that's kind of a poor presentation. This is the VI Spadat, this is the prioritization list, so it would show us exactly what their vulnerabilities are. It could be mental, it could be health, it could be chronic homelessness, it could be veteran. But it takes a full 45 minutes to do this assessment, then we take that and put them onto the prioritization list, then we start working with the individual agencies on how we can make that neighbor making sure that they're going to be housed in a safe, attainable housing situation. Each one of our neighbors could have multiple agencies working together. The database that we use called CaseWorthy allows those that are part of the CaseWorthy and through HIPAA compliance are able to see all of those different connections coming together, see a circle of care when it comes to each of our neighbors, and many times there's three, or four, or five, or six different agencies working together now to make sure that we move our neighbors into a safe, secure, and attainable housing. That's a quick update on where, picture of our homeless here at St. Charles County. I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions that you all might have.
Questions or comments?
It may be in there somewhere, and I, is the, your perspective, is the situation getting worse or getting better compared to where we were two years ago, three years ago?
We weren't able to capture data that showed how many of our homeless neighbors being housed, although each of the individual agencies were doing that. I think we're just doing a better job of seeing our homeless neighbors. I did a quick comparison to where we were this time against last year. Our assessments are certainly up because we had just started this time last year.
Right.
But the connections also were up with agencies because we have 120-plus agencies now onboard, so. I would say as we move towards the second or third quarter of this year, we'll have a really good picture of what our housing and what our homeless neighbors, what that number looks like.
Executive Ellman.
Mr. Chairman. Todd, we've got the best economy we've had in a long time. We've got the lowest unemployment rate we've had as long as anybody can remember, and you're telling me that hasn't had any impact on these numbers?
What's that, on an impact?
The low, the very, very low unemployment rate, the fact that there are jobs. When 10 years ago, people were, had to find them, now they're actually looking for people to work, and that hasn't had any impact on homelessness?
We have had a number of connections with workforce, with our homeless neighbors to get them employed.
Yeah, but I mean, that doesn't show up on your numbers at all?
We have a number of our neighbors that are working two or three jobs also already. About 60% have some type of employment.
Yeah, no, I know, but I'm talking about difference. Are there, the people you deal with, are there the same number unemployed today as there were when the economy was bad?
That one I have to look at, Mr. Ellman, to see.
Okay.
I don't have that one.
And then the other question is the single mothers, 1,200?
We assessed 1,200.
Yeah, single mothers, I mean, do we know how many of those are widows?
No, we don't, but I can query that.
Do we know how many of them were married but are now divorced? And I guess we also don't know how many were never married.
In the one slide we had here, it showed that there were only, of the 1,366 that were identified, and this was for the continuum, was a total, as single-parent females.
But my point is if you're a widow, you obviously have no one to turn to.
Correct.
If you're divorced or never married, you still should have, there still can be child support.
Absolutely.
And do you do anything to find these fathers that aren't supporting their children?
That hasn't been part of this, no.
Huh?
This hasn't, that has not been part of this, I'm afraid, no.
Do you know, I mean, okay, well, so, I mean, that's, you just leave that up to the prosecutor, or, I mean, do you help people get lawyers to get the deadbeat dads to pay up?
We do work with a number of agencies throughout that, that we could certainly look deeper at that.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, sure.
And thanks for everything you do.
My pleasure.
Absolutely.
Mr. Todd, thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you for what you do for our county.
My pleasure. Thanks for the support, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Todd.
Next, we'd like to go to public comments. This is a time when anybody can come before the council with any topic and speak for three minutes. Once a topic has been achieved, we allow three speakers pro and three speakers con, and those that have previously signed a speaker's card may come forward now.
Angela Zorich.
Hello.
Hello.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm a little bit impressed. I'm actually from St. Louis County. My name is Angela Zorich, but we have some concerns in both counties. We're actually all across the state of Missouri. But you've got a beautiful house here, and I loved your presentation, so thank you. So, I have been speaking to my council members about the inhumane treatment of incarcerated people in our jails. The reason I'm here today is that during the past several months, I've received multiple inquiries, concerns about the St. Charles jail. I'm sure you're aware of the three deaths in the St. Louis County jail this year. In January, Larry Rivas, 51, died from alcoholism. He was there less than 24 hours. On February 23rd, Johnny Shai, 29-years-old, died from internal bleeding from an unknown cause. A 20-year-old, Lamar Catchings, died from a very treatable form of leukemia. He was never allowed to see a doctor. He was in the jail for 11 months, and he got no medical treatment, and he died. I believe that all of these deaths could have been prevented. This is not exclusive to the St. Louis County Justice Center. Jails all across Missouri, as well as across the country, are failing to diagnose and treat people for illnesses that are very treatable, and St. Charles is no exception. On the same day that Lamar Catchings died, a lawsuit was filed against St. Charles County by James L. Falk in U.S. District Court. This lawsuit, now I'm quoting the Post-Dispatch, but this came out the same day that Lamar Catchings was found dead in his cell. And this is quoting his attorney. This lawsuit is more about the jail system and trying to correct that. It's an unfortunate pattern that's happening there, and people don't change unless we file lawsuits. I disagree. Our council has really stepped up over the past 30, 45 days, and they are making changes, and fast. So, I just wanted to make you guys aware of this as well. Now, Falk didn't die. He was put in a cell with someone that he had had a fistfight the previous day, and that guy ended up bashing his head into a concrete wall multiple times, and he had some brain damage, or brain trauma. The suit said that St. Charles County has continuously and deliberately failed to train, supervise, control, and discipline its employees who violate inmates' constitutional rights. And it lists several previous lawsuits alleging. One of those lawsuits was in 2015, and that was filed by the family of Robert Breeding. He was 32-years-old in 2013, and he died of a perforated ulcer. Now, this is very treatable, and this guy laid there and blood.
Mr. Chairman, the three minutes are up.
Okay, just one more thing. I've been notified this week of a woman in your jail right now who has been requesting medical care, and she's not getting it. And the guards are telling her that she doesn't have a right to medical care. So, I just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Natasha Troop.
Hello, councilmen. Well, men, my name is Natasha Troop, and I'm also from St. Louis County. And I come here today because it was, thank you, it was my nephew Lamar Catchings that died in St. Louis County. And since then, we have been getting plenty of inmates' calls from your jail and other jails of being mistreated and not being able to get medical care. We lost my nephew, but we shouldn't have to lose more. And I don't want to get up here and give all the inmates' names and stuff because they also been retaliated on by guards since they're notifying of the inadequate care and the abuse that's going on in the system. But I'm here to let you all know that you can make changes and arrangements for these people to get medical care without them dying, and they shouldn't have to die for simple matters. But they shouldn't have to die at all because nobody in your system has been sentenced to death. They only been, they're holding until they're convicted of something, if they're ever convicted of anything. And my nephew's life is gone, and we can't get it back for something that could have been prevented. But at the same time, as I stand here, you all need to take care of the people that's there and let them go home to their families if they can, or go on to their next level of jail, or whatever they're going to do. But they shouldn't die before they get home. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Jennifer Byrd. I live at 9244 Laurel Hill Drive. I am a St. Louis County resident, and I want to tell you all thank you for having the discussion between former Senator John Lamping and John Hancock this evening. I appreciate the fact that you would allow that to happen because so much of what has been happening has been a big cheerleading campaign for Better Together, and any municipalities that have come out in St. Louis County in opposition, even just to a statewide vote, have drawn the ire of the Better Together people, including a lot of threats. I want to personally thank Mayor Nation for sticking his neck repeatedly on the chopping block over this issue, and I would like to encourage you all to support your own resolution. I mean, the denial that this is precedent-setting is shameful. We're talking about creating a metrosity, excuse me, a metro city. Well, I call it a metrosity, I'll just stick with that. And so, it is precedent-setting because it isn't in the works now, it hasn't been done, and it's a complete hostile takeover. So, I would encourage you to show your county residents that you too would stand up to tyranny, really is what it amounts to. And I've been fighting this battle for a long number of years, some of you, I think you might have an idea, Mr. Brazel, certainly a number of people in the audience, but I would commend you to, if you support your own resolution, and I think that it is a very good thing to do. And the argument about the whole bailout makes me angry because that's going to be a big pitch to outstate Missouri. And the bailout that needs to be talking, to be talked about is the fact that BBA is the current status for municipal bond rating in St. Louis City. So, the bailout is going to happen of municipal bondholders, which the problem with St. Louis City is likely a prescription would be bankruptcy. And if we decide we want to recombine our territories or let them back into the county as another municipality, that prescription already exists also in sections, section, I'm sorry, Article 6, Sections 30A and 30B of our state constitution, which is convening the Board of Freeholders. Let them propose a plan, and then only the city and only the county residents will vote to determine whether or not we combine. So, that prescription is there. So, let's, I would appreciate you showing your support for our neighbor, your neighbor us, and supporting your resolution, and helping to raise the voices against what Better Together is attempting to do, and thank you for your time.
Andrew Hunn.
No.
No. Okay, very good.
Different. Do you need me to wear my?
You want to wait till?
I can.
Thank you.
Stay close.
That's right. Brenda Webb, please.
Thank you again so much for letting us speak, you know, at your meetings. We appreciate it. I just want to stand here also opposing the Better Together plan and the merger, and I am for the resolution strongly. As a St. Charles resident, I just believe that really it's a travesty that, you know, they've got, they made this plan, they did it behind closed doors, they appointed a mayor, somebody who would be the mayor, without a vote of the citizens. How can they do that? You know, I don't understand that. I just think that that was wrong, and of course, now he's resigned, so they had to go back and, I don't know what they, you know, put their, what else alternate they put in their plan, but I just think that's bad. The freeholders thing that Mr. Hancock mentioned, and he said, "It's failed three times, so we've got to do something else." No, it didn't fail. What happened is the people said, "No, we don't want to do it." That's an answer. And so, you know, I think that they abide by the will of the people, and I too believe that only people with legal standing should be the ones who vote on something like this. People on the other side of the state, you know, they don't know what the situation is over here. They don't know how it could affect them if that's put together. And something I don't hear a lot about is the fact that if, that the city and the county, St. Louis City and County, get merged, it will probably, will be the biggest political subdivision in the state. So, are they going to decide, like Chicago does, they're going to decide all of our elections? I think that's, you know, to me, that's frightening. And we know St. Louis City can't run anything, you know? If they would, like Jennifer, somebody said, you know, get some decent leaders and get rid of the corruption, which kind of sounds like maybe somebody's working on that, but, you know, that's what they need to do. And I will vehemently oppose bailing out St. Louis City. I don't think we should pay for their consequences. You know, I don't think we should pay for their errors and their mistakes. And so, and the people that keep voting them in, you know, they need to learn to do something different. So, I had several other things down here. The, well, the freeholders thing, I just think that's a really good idea because they need to let the people, you know, make the decision. So, those are my concerns. I really urge you to vote yes on this resolution, and I appreciate the fact that you are, you know, open to that, and you understand where the people are coming from. Thank you.
Karen McKay.
I'm going to keep it short. I'm Karen McKay. I'm from the city of Florissant. I was on the city council with Tom when he was a council member. I'm going to keep it really short and just kind of run this past you. I was born and raised in Florissant. I chose to stay in Florissant when the rest of my family either migrated to the side of the bridge. They made a choice. I made a choice to stay in St. Louis County. Now, that's not to say that when my feeble body gets older and my family says, "Karen, we need to drag you over here to be with us," that I have to make another choice, but it's a choice. And right now, you're being asked to make a choice, to allow us to vote on issues that, where I live... Where I live, where Tom lives, the people that live in St. Louis City and the county, let us make that decision. This isn't something that needs to go statewide. You vote here. I want this to be a great region. But I want to stay in the community that I live in and that I vote in, and I live, and I worship, and I work. And I don't want other people to make that decision for me on a statewide. So please, consider that when you vote tonight and make it 100% of all of you supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's been three speakers. Four of the rest...
We're good. Tom Snyder.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct something I said earlier. You know, Joe had asked me if I had heard from Better Together. Well, we heard from them with a sunshine request, without a "how do you do?", "how are you?" Introducing themselves as just a cold, rude sunshine request when they first started. And then another sunshine request from Hatfield and Company, threatening us to shut up and not oppose it. So we did hear from them. And then in regards to the Board of Freeholders failing, it did succeed with MSD. That was a successful thing. That's how MSD came about, to form a shore district for city and county. So there is a success story with the Board of Freeholders. The three failures, the one failure happened in the '20s. You know, the divorce happened in the late 1800s. And then in the '20s, the city was strong then, and they tried to yank the county back into the city. And the county, it passed in the city overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly failed in the city. And then the two and three attempts, they were both almost on top of each other. At that time, the county was stronger, and it failed in the city and the county. It's different this time. We have... The only thing good about this effort of Better Together is it's created a sense of urgency. And so I think that the Board of Freeholders will be a very healthy discussion. It'll be a contentious discussion. I know that Mayor Nation and I are not going to agree on everything, as some people already know. And it's going to be a knock-down, drag-out Donnybrook. But that's what democracy is all about, and I love it. I mean, I'm wired for it. I'm ready for it. I can't wait to get into the Board of Freeholders discussion. Thanks.
Andrew Hahn.
Andrew Hahn, leader of corporate security for Mastercard. I just want to take a minute to say thank you, Chief Todd, and to the county for looking at the security licensing ordinances and the changes that we requested. The partnership we have with St. Charles County and working with them on their expectations of this, to be able to provide the best security for our public, for our private sector, and for the people that respond accordingly, is paramount. And we just wanted to say thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming.
No more speakers.
No more speakers. Okay, thank you for everybody that participated. We'll move on to the oral report by the county executive Almond. Do you have a report?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Then we move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Are items to be removed?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose? A motion carries. The consent agenda has been passed. Next, we move on to... Resolution 19-01.
Resolution 19-01. A resolution opposing unifying the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County into a new form of government, currently referred to as a metropolitan city through constitutional amendment as it would disenfranchise local voters by submitting a purely local matter to a statewide referendum and subjugate the will of the voters and those political subdivisions to the will of the many.
Is there a substitute amendment?
Well, I'd like to make a comment on the substitute amendment first. This first resolution is a little bit stronger than the second substitute. So I want to make it clear what we talked about. John Hancock's out there. What it says is, "The resolution opposing unifying the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County into a new form of government." This says, "We oppose the unifying government." That's what this says. And that's what he just said we should do. And the council government here, we are all agreed that, well, we're going to give both sides. So both sides would agree with what Mr. Hancock just said. So why would we do the substitute when Mr. Hancock exactly told us that that's what we should do? And that's what this says. And so this is what we should stick with.
All right, so if we're going to have that discussion, I'll have that discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just, I think we need to take the original bill off the table, make a motion to take the bill up for a table so we can begin this discussion. Then we can offer a substitute.
John, is that an opinion or is that a legal fact?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we take Resolution 1901 off the table for discussion.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those that oppose? Okay, the bill has been taken off the table. Now we can open up for discussion.
Is this on the table?
We need to read it again.
She read the title.
She read the title.
Okay.
So is this substitute bill on now?
No.
No.
Your other bill was on the table. So we had a table. We couldn't discuss it because it was tabled. Now we can have discussion. So here's to your point. Opposing unifying the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County into a new form of government through constitutional amendment. I don't know what their final plan is going to be on this, right? So here's my only concern, and anybody else can weigh in on this as you feel free. But I don't like voting yes or no on something until I know what it actually says. So once I know what it actually says, then I'll be a yes or no. As we sit today, on the 29th of April, before something that supposedly is going to be voted on, I believe in... Correct me, John, in November of 2020? Is that right?
That's correct.
So the world could change between now and November of 2020. And I personally don't feel confident in passing your original resolution. The wording that it currently says, I feel much more comfortable, if the word would be, with your substitute resolution for that because I figure your first one is too broad, and it puts us in the position of taking a blanket statement on something that is yet to be done. Because what I've seen people do in the past, governments in the past, is they'll take a position on this that says, "We are against this." And then something changes. And when you get the final bill, you go, "Well, actually, I'm okay with that." I don't know what the final bill is going to be. So until I know what the final bill is going to be, I'm a no on your current resolution, but I'll work with you on the substitute bill.
Mr. Chairman.
Who was first? Cho.
I think the original bill, I was in favor of the original bill from the get-go. I really didn't like the substitute, okay? And Mr. Hancock made it very clear that maybe we should oppose this. And I do oppose this because how can you take a neighborhood and county, take half of their property taxes away from them, take the earnings tax away, and expect their police departments to function correctly? Our county has mutual aid packs with those police departments. If you give them half the funding, it's going to go to hell. We're going to be sending our guys over to St. Louis County more than we already do. So I'm perfectly fine with the original resolution. I think it's stronger than the substitute. And I think it's time for us as a council to make a very strong stand on this. Additionally, if the bill does get better and somebody can come up and point out to us that, yeah, this is better now, and it's going to be better, we can... This is a non-Biden resolution. All right, we'll adopt a second resolution in support. But right now, this thing's stinko. It's a Trojan horse for a billionaire to cut taxes. That's what it is. And he's spending a lot of money to get it done, and it's unethical. And I agree with Mr. Snyder about it. I think he hit the peg right on the head. So I like Joe's original resolution. I think we should roll with it and give Mr. Hancock what he wants.
I got... Oh, I'm sorry, is it my turn?
Was there somebody else?
Mike's first.
I respectfully are going to disagree with the Joes down there saying. I think the strongest statement that was made tonight was when Mr. Nation talked about the consent of the governed. That, to me, rung more true than everything else. I think Mr. Eelm is actually correct that we don't know what we're opposed to because we haven't seen the final plan. Whatever the final plan is, I do believe that it should be by the people that are most directly impacted. Mr. Hancock did make a point that we're all impacted by what happens in the city of St. Louis. The further that you radiate away from the city of St. Louis though, the less impacted that you have. To my point being, the people that live in St. Joseph, Missouri, should not have as large a voice in what happens in the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County. And that, Joe, if I can remind you, is why we had a meeting two weeks ago and came up with this proposed substitution, is not to discuss the merits of the plan itself, but to discuss who should actually vote on it and who should decide once a plan is or is not ever determined. So I absolutely agree that the freeholders is the way to go about it. And that would call for a vote of St. Louis Countyans and St. Louis City, not everybody in the state of Missouri. And that's why I'm a major supporter of the proposed substitute resolution that we discussed two weeks ago. Thank you.
Okay, so right now, we're discussing to remove this from the table and...
We're discussing your current resolution.
Okay, so everything you guys said is absolutely accurate, okay?
Great.
I just wanted to hear you say it before we talk on the substitute bill, okay? So that's...
Joe, what are you talking about?
No, I just wanted to hear Mike.
I am absolutely baffled by what you're saying.
Yes, you are correct. But we did change. We watered this thing down just to get everybody else to agree. And I agree with that. So you're good. I'm glad you said that.
I disagree with you saying that we watered it down. And if we did anything, we made it stronger, and we made a resolution that we can actually get behind and support. And if you're playing games down at that end of the table, I'm, you know...
No, no, I will agree with you.
That's not what we should be doing up here, Joe.
I agree with you.
That is absolutely crazy.
Okay, so...
All right, let's have some civility here. Let's... Where are we now? Do we have... We had a vote on...
We're still discussing on the current resolution.
We have to remove this and offer a substitute?
We've already voted on the substitute.
We have not.
You're on the original resolution. The original resolution was...
That's always on the table.
Wait a minute, everybody be quiet.
Right. The original resolution was tabled. Then the motion was just adopted to take up that resolution that was tabled on 2/25, and that is now before the council.
Okay.
The original resolution.
Okay, I'd like to make... I'll make a motion to remove the existing resolution and offer a proposed substitute resolution, whatever the number is.
It has been approved.
Substitution resolution.
No, and then offer substitute resolution, 1901, to replace it.
So you just make a new motion for the substitute.
Okay, new motion for the substitute, 1901.
And is there a second?
And I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of the substitute?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, the substitute is in...
Discussion.
Discussion now.
Can I say something?
Well...
I agree with you, what you're saying, Mike. I didn't mean to...
Joe, you're going to play games. What we're trying to accomplish here by dangling one carrot out in front of us so that we'll bite at one thing, that is not the way that we do business here. And you should be ashamed of yourself for doing so.
No, I just... I did... I believed in the first resolution. And in order to agree, I'm agreeing with the second resolution. That's fine, okay? I want to ask John Lampin a question. John, you've been here...
He has to come forward. Mr. Lampin, come forward, please.
I think we're... I mean, we're... I know we went through this thing real well, but I just want to make sure you... I want to understand. I want to hear you. I know Mayor Nation talked a little bit about this. But so when they had these meetings, they had these meetings discussing how they're going to put this together and how they're going to vote. These were all mostly non-political people, and there was no sunshine. They wouldn't deliver any sunshine requests. They didn't deliver any notes. And so there was no transparency whatsoever.
No, no. It was... Better Together is a private organization, not subject to sunshine laws. I would say the people involved are very political, mostly political consultants. They've been around politics. A lot of the directors, a former chief of staff, a mayor of St. Louis. So that's all the answer to your question. You know, if it's okay, I do... I came tonight in support of a Senate committee substitute. I do think it's the proper first message to be sent. And I would make the point, though, that the idea that the initiative petition doesn't exist is actually not true. You may not be aware that an arm of Better Together has sued all 88 municipalities. And they cite a state statute, which I don't have a citing right today, that contends that the initiative petition is on file, and therefore it does exist today. So without the reality that initiative petition existing, then their lawsuits wouldn't have merit, in their opinion.
So question. Is this the final wording that's going to be voted on?
Only Better Together knows that.
So that's... That is my point. I wasn't saying there's nothing there. I'm saying we don't know what the final is going to be. So just so we're clear, that's my point on this. I don't know what the final is going to be. I know where we sit, April 29, 2019. I don't know where we sit November 2020.
And Mike, for what it's worth, I too, if I were in your chair, would want to vote tonight for the substitute. And it's a long road.
I just don't want to be fenced in.
I completely concur. If this ultimately does come to a vote next November, which I personally think is somewhat in doubt, then there's plenty of time for this body to weigh in if they see fit. Once the final version has been accepted by the Secretary of State's office and the entity goes to collect the signatures, because you do... It's about $200 million to collect 165,000 signatures in six of the eight congressional districts. Once that process begins, that will be the final product. Because if they were to change the product at that time, then they'd have to, you know, go back and collect new signatures. So I expect that process will begin no later than November, December, if it ever begins at all. So you have plenty of time in 2020 to weigh in at that time.
Mr. Webb.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just to make sure we're all clear. We're on the substitute. If that is called for the vote, if the substitute's adopted, it will eliminate the underlying bill, the underlying resolution. And if the substitute is defeated, what will happen is then we will go back to the underlying resolution. So that's the procedure where we are right now.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Hammond?
You know, it seems like this is all premature. We're even involved in this in St. Charles County. And I can tell you that my feelings, I can't support it at this time either, one of those resolutions, until there's something happens on the state level or actually something that's put out to the public that we can all consider. I know that I'm a... Currently, I don't go to the city. I don't go to St. Louis County or St. Louis City. or St. Louis City, and the only time I do go is maybe to a ballgame, a day game, I don't dare go down at night, and because of the safety concerns, not only at, in the city of St. Louis, but also St. Charles County, and I feel blessed to be living in my family out here in St. Charles County, where it is a safe community, and, but I, at this point, I can't support either one of the resolutions.
Yeah, you know, a number of weeks ago, in the first resolution-
Came before us, I was the one that, you know, I pointed out, just the first, you know, sentence, a resolution opposing unifying the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County into a new form of government, you know, and again, if you take Joe public, that's about as far as most people will read, and I thought that they were kind of, that we as a group were kind of missing the point, which is the idea of the entire state voting on this, and I think we're all in agreement that that is somewhat of a ludicrous idea, and it flies in the face of Thomas Jefferson and any other constitutional scholar that you wish to quote. So I, and I kind of disagree that what we're voting for, the substitute, is watered down, I don't agree with that, I think it basically is stating our position as we see it at this point. And, you know, down the road, we can oppose or we can support what they come up with, when they actually come up with a final version of whatever it is that they come up with.
Mr. Klinghammer?
I agree with Mr. Hollander, I think that it's important that we do pass this substitute resolution, because now is the time that we can express how we think that the process should move forward, the process being decided by and for the people in St. Louis County and St. Louis City, not for, by the people that live out in Chillicothe somewhere. You know, those, it's gonna affect them, it's by the people that are governed, and those are the ones that are gonna have the most direct impact, pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Anybody else? My question is, do you feel that strongly that this has to be voted on at this time?
I'm prepared to vote for it.
I'm prepared to vote for it. Okay, all right. I feel like it's a little premature, and I'd like to-
Again, I think it's our way of expressing what we think should be in the final document. If we don't tell people what we think should be in the final document, then we're choosing not to participate at all, and I think that our voice should be heard about who should make the decision, the ultimate decision, who should be at the ballot polls the day to make the decision. And I think that what we're seeing here is, whichever way it goes, either better together or separately, with the way that it is now, it should be decided by the people that are most directly impacted, be it St. Louis County and city residents.
Okay, all right. Well, my feeling is it's just a little premature, and that I would suggest, if somebody feels that way with me, that we vote to table it.
May I make a comment? The original bill, I was fine with the original bill, I understand what Mr. Brazel was trying to do, and I don't very rarely ever give backing to Mr. Brazel, but I think his intent was good, and the long and short of it is this, I understand what Mike is saying, that maybe we should just oppose the way that they're usurping democracy with this, but I do want to make it clear, I've read everything I could, in fact, I had a little discussion with the county councilor, because they filed this petition with Secretary of State already for the ballot language, pulled it and filed it again, okay, and now probably filed again since they don't have King Stinger in there anymore. So anyway, this thing's gonna get changed around some, I get that, okay? So I'm good with the substitute the way it is, because we're just saying, hey, the way they're doing it's undemocratic, and it's wrong. Now, down the road, if they come up with something that's similar to what they've got right now, then we can do another resolution, and I'm not good with that, we'll do a two-step process. But still, we gotta come out and say something, we gotta stand up for right where it's wrong, and not giving the folks in St. Louis City and St. Louis County the right of self-determination is just plain wrong, period.
Okay, seeing that, if there's no agreement with me, then I ask for somebody to call for the question.
I call the question.
All right. Read the title and call the roll.
Substitute Resolution 19-01, A Resolution Supporting the Right of the Residents of the City of St. Louis and St. Louis County to Self-Determination Without the Intrusion of Non-Residents and Subjection to a Statewide Referendum. Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
No.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Resolution 19-01 has passed, and we'll move on to bills for introduction, or bills for final passage, beginning with Bill Number 4699.
Bill Number 4699, requested by Michael Hurlbert, sponsored by Joe Brazel, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning District Map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to r. r. single-family residential district as per application, RZ 19-02.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4699? Seeing none?
Bill Number 4699, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning District Map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district to r. r. single-family residential district as per application, RZ 19-02. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
4699 has passed, and we'll move on to Bill Number 4700.
Bill Number 4700, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning District Map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district with floodway fringe overlay district to r. r. single-family residential district with floodway fringe overlay district as per application, RZ 19-03. Councilman Elam?
Wait a minute, any questions or comments on this bill? Seeing none?
Bill Number 4700, An Ordnance Amending the Zoning District Map of the County of St. Charles, Missouri by rezoning land from a agricultural district with floodway fringe overlay district to r. r. single-family residential district with floodway fringe overlay district as per application, RZ 19-03. Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Bill Number 4700 has passed, we'll move to Bill 4701.
Bill Number 4701, An Ordnance Amending the 2019 Budget Approved by Ordnance Number 18-117 for the St. Charles County Department of Community Development Division of Building and Code Enforcement by removing one Government Services Representative II position and adding one Government Services Representative III position.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4701? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 4701, An Ordnance Amending the 2019 Budget Approved by Ordnance Number 18-117 for the St. Charles County Department of Community Development Division of Building and Code Enforcement by removing one Government Services Representative II position and adding one Government Services Representative III position. Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Bill 4701 has passed, we'll move to 4702.
Bill Number 4702, An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute Surface Transportation Program Supplemental Agreement, Federal Project STP-7302669 with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Acquisition of Rideaway for Work Associated with the Construction of an Interchange at Route 364 and Gudamouth Road.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Cronin?
Yeah, John, I've read this, and basically, we're acquiring right-of-way for a MoDOT road that's gonna eventually be in the MoDOT control, is that STP grant paying for that right-of-way, or do we have to pay part of that?
Is paid for by the grant, and you're correct, the only thing that this agreement is doing is that the original boilerplate agreement that MoDOT had before and we approved, provided that right-of-way within the freeway would be acquired by MoDOT, in this case, it makes more sense, since we're the lead agency to acquire that on their behalf.
So we're giving the land to MoDOT, letting them use it for the road, but we're getting the feds to pay for it with an STP grant, basically? Kind of sort of?
Repeat that question, I'm sorry.
Okay, we're acquiring the land for this project, it'll end up going to MoDOT, and it's getting paid for, the land we're purchasing, acquisitions get paid for with an STP grant.
Correct, so 80% of it will be from the STP, 80% of it would be from the grant, 20% from matching funds.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Please read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 4702, An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute Surface Transportation Program Supplemental Agreement, Federal Project STP-7302669 with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Acquisition of Rideaway for Work Associated with the Construction of an Interchange at Route 364 and Gudamouth Road. Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Bill 4703 has been passed, and we'll move on to Bill 4704.
Bill Number 4704, An Ordnance Authorizing Execution of Documents for Receipt of Grant Funds Up to the Amount of $7,000 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services and Further Amending Ordnance 18-117 by Providing Related Supplemental Appropriations to the Budget of the Preparedness and CRI Grants Division Budget of the Department of Public Health.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 4704, An Ordnance Authorizing Execution of Documents for Receipt of Grant Funds Up to the Amount of $7,000 from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services and Further Amending Ordnance 18-117 by Providing Related Supplemental Appropriations to the Budget of the Preparedness and CRI Grants Division Budget of the Department of Public Health. Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Bill Number 4704 has passed, we'll move on to Bill 4705.
Bill Number 4705, An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement for Financial Assistance, Grant Agreement Number 2019003 between St. Charles County and the St. Louis-Jefferson Solid Waste Management District for Receipt of Funds in an Amount Up to $100,000 and Further Amending Ordnance 18-117 by Providing Related Supplemental Appropriations to the Budget of the Environmental Division Budget of the Department of Public Health.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 4705, An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute an Intergovernmental Agreement for Financial Assistance, Grant Agreement Number 2019003 between St. Charles County and the St. Louis-Jefferson Solid Waste Management District for Receipt of Funds in an Amount Up to $100,000 and Further Amending Ordnance 18-117 by Providing Related Supplemental Appropriations to the Budget of the Environmental Division Budget of the Department of Public Health. Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Bill 4705 has passed, and we'll move on to Bill 4706. Bill Number 4706, An Ordnance Amending Section 605.010 to 605.140 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO concerning the licensing of watchmen and security officers.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 4706, An Ordnance Amending Section 605.010 to 605.140 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO concerning the licensing of watchmen and security officers. Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Bill 4706 has been passed, we move on to 4707.
Bill Number 4707, An Ordnance Amending the 2019 Budget Adopted by Ordnance 18-117 to Add One Additional Position of Assistant Court Clerk II to the Municipal Court.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, read the title and call the roll.
Bill Number 4707, An Ordnance Amending the 2019 Budget Adopted by Ordnance 18-117 to Add One Additional Position of Assistant Court Clerk II to the Municipal Court. Councilman Elam?
Yes.
Councilman White?
Yes.
Councilman Hammond?
Yes.
Councilman Hollander?
Yes.
Councilman Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilman Cronin?
Yes.
Councilman Brazel?
Yes.
Bill 4707 has been passed, we'll move on to Bill 4708.
Bill Number 4708, An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute an Amendment to the Agreement with Northeast Community Action Corporation, NICAC, to Act as Grant Subrecipient in Managing Housing Choice Fouchers Assigned to the St. Charles County Housing Assistance Program.
Since the one voting members can't be here tonight, I ask that this bill be tabled, ask for a motion.
So moved?
The second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Bill 4708 has been tabled. Moving on to bills for introduction with 4709.
Bill Number 4709, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by John White, An Ordnance Amending Sections 500.150, 500.300, 500.310, 500.520A, .A, 500.600A, and 500.880 of the ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO related to building codes and the building commission.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move on to Bill 4710.
Bill Number 4710, requested by Mike Hurlbert, sponsored by John White, An Ordnance Amending Chapter 625 Plumbing Contractors and On-Site Sewage Disposal Contractors, Chapter 626, Third-Party Inspectors of Wells and of Private or On-Site Sewage Disposal Systems, Chapter 630 Electrical Contractors, Chapter 632 Pool Installers, Chapter 633 HVACR Contractors, Chapter 635 Explosives Code, Section 635.080, 635.140, and 635.150, and creating a new Chapter 627 On-Site Wastewater Treatment System Installer Business License, and a new Chapter 637 Blasting Contractor License of the ordinances of the, of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSCCMO.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move on to Bill 4711.
Bill Number 4711, An Ordnance Approving Execution of Cost Aportionment Agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to Coordinate the Participation of St. Charles County and the Cost of the Commission's Public Improvement for I-70 in St. Charles County, which includes mowing and litter pickup along I-70 from the Warren County Line to the Missouri River, Job Number WMSCF18Q.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Cronin?
Yes, sir, before, this is kind of discretionary spending, basically, it's for two additional mowings of Interstate 70 to make it look pretty, and while that's a worthwhile thing, we're also mowing MoDOT road with our county taxpayers' money. So I guess, I would like to get an update from the finance director between now and the next meeting with how our sales tax is rolling in, and if the money that we actually brought in for 2018 was what was projected in the budget, and then that point in time, if we're doing a little bit better, maybe than we were last year, maybe we can think about spending this money, if not, I don't know if I support spending $80,000 for this or not.
Very good. Any other questions or comments?
Chairman?
Mr. Executive?
I have a question for Mr. Schnur. Sir? This money would come out of road and bridge, right?
Right.
Okay, so it's not dependent upon how sales taxes are coming in?
Correct.
Do we, is our road and bridge fund what we expected, or more or less, or do you need to look at that?
I'd have to look to see, but generally, my recollection is they were pretty well on budget, yes. Yeah, I'll verify that, Joe, I'll get back to you if that's right.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Seeing nothing else, we'll move on to Bill 4712.
Bill Number 4712, requested by Steve Aylman, sponsored by John White, An Ordnance Waiving Liquor License Fees for Certain Concessions/Operations of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of St. Charles for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, whereas the St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department requests the fees for liquor licenses for certain concessions/operations of the City of St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department be waived. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the County Council of St. Charles County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the county registrar is hereby authorized and directed to waive liquor license fees for the City of St. Charles Parks and Recreation Department facilities in Blanchett Park, McNair Park, Mueller Park, and Wappelhorse Park for the period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage and approval.
Any questions or comments on Bill 4712? Seeing none, let's move on to 4713.
Bill Number 4713, requested by Mike Klinghammer and John White, sponsored by Mike Klinghammer and John White, An Ordnance Opting Out of the Annual Back-to-School Sales Tax Holiday.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Cronin?
This applies to both 4713 and 4714, the question I have is whether or not we can afford to do both, and I guess that's related back to Bob's offer to share with us the And I guess that's related back to Bob's offer to share with us the sales tax history and where our projections are now. Because while I think the annual back-to-school sales tax holiday is a great thing for families, the question whether this county government can afford it. Same way with, I think we're going to need to stop the money to replace Simon and I hate to see him leave, but the same token is can we afford to bump him up to pay grades? That position to take pay grades. So before I vote on either one of these, I'd like to see what Bob's report has to say.
Mr. Cronin, the 4713 opts us out of the program.
Yes, I understand that, but I mean, if we do opt out of the, if we opt out of the program, how much money that will bring in?
Oh, bring in? Okay. I'm sorry, I thought you were implying that there'd be a cost associated with it.
Yeah, no.
Great. Okay.
Thank you.
So on 4713, we can't answer that question according to Mr. Schnur because I think this is the third year or fourth year in a row that we have now discussed this. Mr. Brazel brought it up first a few years ago and we found out then that sales tax revenue is reported by month, not by week. Therefore, any number that we get is a best guesstimate as to what kind of money that we can bring in. I would always argue, I have for the last three years and I will continue to argue, that doing this does nothing more than hurt local retailers because local retailers have said, and we've heard from the Chamber of Commerce when we talked about this three years ago, local retailers use this as a way to drive people to their stores. Yes, there are people who game the system. I know I've had discussions with some of you about how people use this to go in and they go by a computer just because they can get it without the sales tax and they take advantage of that. Don't disagree with that at all. I'm sure there are people who do that. But in today's internet sales world, this is a good thing for our local retailers. So to help local retail, this is a good thing. If you take this out, we've heard estimates from 150,000 to 220,000. I believe that's the guesstimate that we heard a number of years ago as to what we think we might bring in by opting out of this. I would tell you it's a completely made up number because we don't know how many people are going to continue to buy the way they're currently buying. If you take this off the table, there's no reason to go to the local retailer, I'll just buy it online. Or if I really want to take advantage of the sales tax holiday, I'll just cross the river and I'll go buy it over there. Therefore, we're sending that retail business across the river and we're helping out what we've already decided is a dysfunctional county. How about that? So John, thanks for being here and proving that point. So this whole thing to me is, it's just wrong. And I think overall, we do damage to our county by trying to recoup a little bit of money. And I know we need all the money that we can get, but it really looks to me like we're just doing a government money grab by doing this and we're doing it on the backs of our local retailers. And that's just how I feel and you can say whatever you want, but there's no way you're going to convince me otherwise.
I don't think we need to say anything then.
I didn't say that. And the good news for you is I will be traveling at this next meeting. I will actually be in Texas when this next meeting comes up. So I just wanted to get my voice out there and say, this is bad, please don't vote for it. So there you go. It's all yours, Mr. Brazel.
I said dysfunctional city, but St. Louis County is also dysfunctional, however.
I felt what you meant.
Yeah. Bob, at the next meeting, can you bring that graph that you showed us that shows how much money we're going, how we're dipping down into our reserves, millions of dollars every year? And at that, the point that we're going to have zero, I think it was 2026 or something like that? Or, I can't remember the years. Yeah. And I think that's important to talk about when you're given, I agree with what you're saying, Mike, but sometimes you've got to make hard decisions. And if we're talking about doing tax increases and other things like that because we just keep diving into our capital funds and our savings, then I don't know, I don't know how much sense it makes to do a one-day or weekend tax holiday. So it's just have more of a factual, fact-based logic to it rather than just making a decision because some folks are getting upset. So I don't know. I think it's worth the economic, you need to show us the numbers.
Just to be clear, those folks who get upset are your local retailers, small business local retailers, just so we're clear. Those are the folks that would be upset.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Another one?
Hey, I am a local retailer, okay? But unfortunately, you can't buy a lawnmower, you can't buy a lawnmower tractor and opt out of sales tax. But anyway, I just keep teasing. But anyway, I agree with what Mike said and I would like us to be able to afford to let the folks get a break on sales tax. But then again, one other thing I'm pointing out to make is I met with a couple state legislators a couple weeks ago in Wentzville and we're talking about county budget, okay? And I'll talk about what's before the legislature right now regarding sales tax or use tax now that the Supreme Court says we can start taxing internet purchases. And neither one of them were aware of the fact that a use tax in St. Charles County goes all to parks. The sales tax would help our general fund, which where we need the money. So I would make it a point for everybody that sits on this council, when you have your dealings with your state legislatures, to tell them, we need the state sales tax to be on internet purchases, not a state use tax on internet purchases. Because the sales tax is going to help us get out of the budget crisis we're in right now.
All right. Very good. Anybody?